Mr. Chair, the next four items are being voted on as the council being the Watkin County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. The first item was the request approval for the county executive to enter into a cooperation agreement between the Watkin County Flood Control Zone District and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for Berchton Creek Left Bank repair in the amount of $377,200 with a local cost share in the amount of $75,488. This was approved 3 to 0, and I so move.
All right, we have that motion in front of us with our flood control hats on. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next -- trying to get the balance on this microphone problem. Mr. Chair, the next item is to request approval for the county executive to enter into a cooperation agreement between the Watkin County Flood Control Zone District and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for Berchton Creek Right Bank repair in the amount of $89,700 with a local cost share in the amount of $17,940. This received a vote of 3 to 0, and I so move.
All right, we have that motion in front of us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next item is request approval for the county executive to enter into a contract between Watkin County and the Watershed Science and Engineering to provide final designs, develop bid-ready plans and specifications, assist in bid preparation, and provide construction support for the High Creek Sediment Management Plan in the amount not to exceed $149,000. This received a vote of 3 to 0, and I so move.
We have that motion in front of us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
And Mr. Chair, the last item is request approval for the county executive to enter into a contract between Watkin County and Geo Engineers, Inc. for design assistance for the Birch Point Collaborative Draining System Repair Project in the amount of $63,762. This received a vote of 3 to 0, and I so move.
All right, we have that motion in front of us. Still with our flood control hats on. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. To Public Works and Health?
Number eight was pulled, was withdrawn. Number nine, approval of the 2015 Watkin County Integrated Vegetation Management Plan and Discussion of Geneva Consulting's Report on No Spray or Restricted Spray Roadside Vegetation Management Programs. It was a very interesting meeting since that was all that was on there. We came up with quite a few ideas on how to improve the program, and Dr. Hutchings was extremely helpful in giving us ideas and taking our ideas along with it. So, the county committee voted 3 to 0 to approve the 2015 plan for the next year and hopefully incorporate some of the ideas that were brought up. I want to just give you a couple because one of them was mine, and I liked it a lot.
So that was your motion?
Yeah, but I want to still talk about it a little more. Okay. We have this program called Owner Will Maintain. Well, the program is not very effective because people don't even know if they're still on or off the program, and I didn't realize -- I got on the program years ago, but I didn't realize I was supposed to re-up on it every year. So technically, I probably haven't been in the program for many, many years. And not only do people have to re-up on it every year, they have to bring it in by hand. So, one of the ideas that was brought up was to include a program where people can either do it online or somehow do it where not only it's real easy for them, but also get educational messaging out to people about the program itself. That's part of the problem. A lot of people don't know anything about it. And my idea was to create another kind of program that's similar called Community Owner Will Maintain Program, similar to having the groups that take a mile of road to take the trash off and everything. If we can have groups set up to do a mile of maintenance themselves instead of the county doing it. Because one of the biggest concerns, I think, that's been raised about our spray program, that's where most of it's coming from, the concerns, is that there are some people who are very sensitive to our sprays, and if we give them other alternatives that they can do in their area, I think that would be a win-win. So, stay tuned.
All right, so the motion from the committee was approval. Mr. Mann?
I'm going to speak in support of the motion, and I just wanted to point out that the concerns about glyphosate are run throughout the county. We heard from a lot of people worried about the spray program. Our county has reduced the amount of herbicide that we use since 2002 by 90%. We're only using 30 gallons a year of Roundup, or you know, the related product. So I think we're doing a good job of reducing and having a low spray count. And we're going to wait for an EPA report that's coming out this year to sort of update the state of the scientific knowledge on Roundup, glyphosate, and how toxic it is, how persistent it is in the waterways. And we're going to revisit the decision next year, but for now, I'm comfortable supporting our current policy.
All right, we have the motion in front of us. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We're on to items with no committee assignment. The first one is an ordinance establishing the Watkin County Code 2.46, creating a Watkin County Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force intended to provide recommendations, oversight, and specific timeframes on the development of new or enhancement of existing programs designed along a continuum that effectively reduces incarceration of individuals struggling with mental illness and chemical dependency, and minimizes jail utilization by pre-trial defendants who can safely be released. I don't know who wrote the title for that one. So, we discussed this in committee previously, so that's the ordinance in front of us. What's the wishes of the council?
I'll move approval.
Ms. Brenner has moved approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kremmons?
Seconded.
Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, I would, you know, we heard from a lot of people tonight, and I got some new information which was very helpful to me. But something that's kind of concerning me, we have done so much regarding diversionary services, and not only have we started really amping up, and we are going to ensure the money is there, to have those diversionary services that we pointed out and put in this up and going when the jail opens, but we already have services in place that it seemed like, from what some of the people talked about, they didn't even know we had them, you know? And I understand, some of them may be underutilized, but that's something we're committing to to make them more robust. But I just got the feeling from some people that, you know, telling us we could do this or we could do that, some of those things we are already doing. And I'll give you a specific, the, I don't know if you call it early childhood, children at risk. We do have a very robust program with the school districts, and we've worked a lot on that, and I think it's been extremely helpful. Everything can always get better, but that's a program that has done a lot of good in this county. And somebody brought it up like we aren't even doing it, so I just wanted to mention it.
Mr. Buchanan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm certainly in favor of this ordinance. I think these next three items are certainly related and obviously work together. And I have one fear, well, I have a lot of questions and one big fear. And the one big fear is, is that without our partners with the city of Bellingham signing on, and I'm hearing that that is probably not going to happen, I'm afraid that moving forward, without trying to do a compromise, we are moving forward to a dead end. I think that dead end will come in November. I'm really skeptical of what we can, how we can get anything passed when we have such a vision, and we have the city not signing on. So, I think what we heard tonight was a potential counterproposal that could come in two weeks. There would be a compromise that may be something that the city could work with. And I would much rather put forward something that has a better chance of passing this November than to push something through that, in my opinion, doesn't have a chance. So, I'm not asking to put it off a year. I don't think that's a good idea at all. But I think the two weeks that was talked about, we could probably live with, and we could see that proposal. I would also like, if we could pull it off, to do a joint hearing with the Bellingham City Council, a joint work session, but we'd have to do it next week. And I personally would commit any day of time to do that within the next two weeks or whatever it takes. That's sometimes a hard thing to put together, I know, but I would like to try. So, I would personally like to move that we do allow for a compromise to come forward that we can feel a little more comfortable with going through the voters. So putting it off for two weeks.
That was a motion to hold this ordinance for two weeks? You figured blankets to hold for three, all three items? Hopefully do all three at once. One at a time. So, the motion would be for this one to begin with?
Yeah.
Because I believe they're so heavily related that we should do it all. All right, motion to hold this. Ms. Brenner?
I think, so I didn't already make a motion? Yeah, I did. I already made a motion. I'm going to speak against, well, we can't.
Motion to hold, so motion to hold takes press.
Oh, okay. Well, can I speak against it?
You can speak against it.
I would really like to have those done separately. I agree with you. I want to find out more about.
You are going to do it separately?
I know, but I don't want to hold this one up. No, I think this is, stands on its own feet, and it's a really important piece of it. And I think one of the things we can do to show the public we are really serious about diversion and reducing, you know, jail incarceration, if that's possible, but definitely diversion for people with mental illness and substance abuse issues and start working. I want to get, go on in that program immediately. So, I could wait two weeks on the other, but I don't want to wait on that.
Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I too am going to speak against the well-intended motion from Mr. Buchanan. Yes, they're all related, all these issues are related, but regardless of what the council does, we need to move forward on this task force. So, I think we can, we can deal with this issue by itself because no matter what we wind up doing, unless, we don't have to have consensus or buy-in from any city for us to know, in my opinion, for us to know that we need to move forward on this. I mean, this needs to be, this needs to happen. Everything needs to happen, but this one really doesn't have to be tied to the other measures, so I would.
Ms. Buchanan?
Well, yeah, I would agree with what both Councilor Brenner and Kremmons said, and I would be willing to withdraw the motion on the first item and look at the other two. Because I agree, the most, it's very important to get this started and get it underway so it can be effective. So, I would withdraw it.
Okay, so that motion to hold has been withdrawn. Brown, do you have a comment?
The only thing I was going to say is that, once we've approved this, it doesn't really become effective until we've also approved the budget to go with it. So, the approval of this, of this particular ordinance is, at this stage, without the budget approval, somewhat symbolic, and doesn't really cause any downstream impact.
Yeah, I'll just speak, I'm in favor of passing this this evening. It really is separate from the jail. We've kept it separate. The money would be county money, not money that the other cities are moving on. So, I think, at least if we pass this this evening, we can start advertising, we can start to build a committee so we can get these discussions going. And so I think we need to look at this as a separate thing, and I've been listening to what the city has to say too. I haven't heard any of them being concerned about the prevention diversion program, so I think we need to move on this. Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, and so because of that, I do not think this vote is symbolic at all. I think it's very legitimate, and it will start things moving right away, especially the, you know, the task force itself.
Any other discussion on the motion in front of us to approve this ordinance? Guess we're ready for the roll call.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Kremmons?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Seth Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. The next one is a resolution approving the jail facility use inter-local agreement between Watkin County and the cities of Bellingham, Blaine, Everson, Ferndale, Linden, Nuxack, and Sumas, and including a commitment to enhance mental health and substance addiction programs to reduce jail population recidivism, including the establishment of a criminal justice diversion task force. What's the wishes of the council? Ms. Brenner?
I would like to hear from the executive what happens if the city of Bellingham doesn't sign on to this.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is Executive Louse. The two resolutions that you have before you are the combined work of the mayors of the small cities, Mayor of Bellingham, Watkin County Administration. Both resolutions do not become binding on Watkin County until all of the cities have signed on to them. The jail facility use agreement that the resolution approved my signature on does not become binding to the cities until all cities sign on, and then it doesn't become binding until the voters of Watkin County have approved the sales tax measure. So by offering a vote in favor of this tonight, if the city of Bellingham next week or in a future meeting says, "No, we aren't, we aren't in favor of this," the resolution and the signature becomes invalid, or basically null and void. The same with the resolution for the submission to the qualified voters of Watkin County. If you, if you have read that, you'll notice, therefore be resolved, that it takes the approval of all cities and the say of the signed jail facility use agreement before it gives me the authority to work with the auditor to get it on the ballot. So my suggestion tonight, based on all of the work that we've done over the past years leading up to the jail planning task force, the purchase of the property, all of the DLR presentations that we've had, the work that we've done over the last couple months that you've had this agreement, would be, my recommendation, of course, would be for us to approve both of those, and then allow the city of Bellingham to take a look at it, and if they say, "No, we aren't in favor of it," what I've asked of them, as I've asked of you and all of the cities, is, is to give us the specific reasons that they aren't in favor of it so that we can come back to find out whether or not we can facilitate a compromise that would work for all of us again. So, by continuing, for us continuing to wait for each other to make decisions on this ends up being counterproductive because we're running out of time. The opportunity for a change to be made on this, to be approved by all of the cities again, to be gone out to all of the other cities that have already approved, to be able to make that happen, and to meet the August 4th deadline is, we've got a closed opportunity. So I would strongly suggest that if you feel that the proposal that we've put together is appropriate and adequate for the voters to decide on, is to say yes to it tonight and allow the city of Bellingham to give us a clearly articulated reason why they aren't in favor of it, if indeed they aren't. And as you know, we've had six of the seven cities sign on to it at this point. While I have the floor, I'd like to just take the opportunity to correct a couple of things that, or comment on a couple of things concerning public testimony tonight. The SCORE facility was $55,765,000 for 674 beds. That was the construction costs. Their developed cost for the project was $97,861,342. Our construction costs are $70,880,000. It is higher than the SCORE facility, but it's not apples for apples. So, can it, give me just a minute, is the executive?
I think we're going to have those questions for you.
Okay. Anyway, we've got two things going against us, and that's construction inflation and the configuration. So I just wanted to make that as a, as a point since I have the floor. So, thank you.
Mr. Buchanan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to move that we postpone this for two weeks to hear the compromise proposal that this coalition is talking about bringing forth for the same reasons I explained earlier.
All right, so there's a motion with a second for Mr. Mann to hold this for two weeks. Mr. Brown?
Just for clarity, what is the, Mr. Executive, what is the timeframe for which we must meet, in order, must vote on this in order for it to make it to the ballot?
The last meeting that you would have in July, I think, would be the absolute latest date. But if you want to give the, the opportunity to give the public some opportunity to learn more about it, is, is I would encourage us to get that taken care of sooner than that.
And then my second question is, I just want to confirm that a vote for the resolution for the inter-local agreement and a vote to put this on the ballot is not a vote for the actual funding of the jail, that that project still has to be presented to the council as a budget item for approval or otherwise, correct?
You're talking the contracts for the jail is what you're talking about?
The agreement to the final design and the contracts that will be released for those.
No, we need to continue to engage with the council to, in those decisions after we have the funding put in place, the final design, final build, bid, contract approval, so on and so forth, we would be engaging council with.
Yep, so then, bear with me just for clarity, so we would be voting on agreeing with an interloper with the other cities? We would be voting on agreeing to put this on the ballot? The voters would then decide whether they want to fund the ballot item, and then you come back to the council and say, "This is, this is what we specifically want funded," and the council then decides whether we agree with that or not?
Yeah, in more detail, if the voters approve this, then we would be coming back for the final contracts with DLR for the final design, and then we would go out to bid with it, and then there would be bid award, there'd be council approval on the bid award, and then we would go into construction into early 2017 to make that happen.
Just to follow up to that, doesn't the agreement though spell out the size of the jail that the voters are voting on?
Yes, 521 beds in Phase 1, as has been presented to you probably for the last year and a half.
Right, so if the voters approve that, when you bring a contract, it's going to build a 521-bed jail? It's not going to be?
Correct.
Okay, what do you want to build now?
No, no.
Ms. Brenner?
Okay, little more confusion here. So, if we went ahead and did this, and then the city didn't support it and came back with a counterproposal, does that have to come back to us?
Yes.
Okay.
It has to come back to the county, and it will have to go back to all of the other cities.
Right, okay. And also, there, these have all been estimates. See, I got to say, I like the size of the proposal. I have no problem with it. I love the layout. I have concerns about the cost, but we will have access to know that they might change, and we can maybe, I'm not going to hold my breath, but that we could maybe do better if a bid comes in lower than what we've been estimating?
I'd estimate we're at about 60% of the design right now, and if the voters approve this, the next item that I would like to take care of is, is to review all of our assumptions, review the design values of it, review the construction costs, the value engineering decisions that we've made on it, and see whether we could refine that to ensure that the costs don't escalate beyond, obviously, what we want them to do, but also, in the best interest of the county, is to make sure that we're spending every dollar wisely as we go through. But it's going to cost us another couple million dollars to get, go from 60% to go to 100% of design, and it's just not the, we're close enough at this time, based on national construction estimates and previous jails, to be able to make a decision to go out to the voters at this level of detail. But yes, there's a lot of work that's going to be, that's going to take place if the voters approve this as we move forward with the final design and construction.
Okay, is there some sort of clause in the ballot motion that if it turns out we don't have to spend this much money, that what happens to the excess money, that if we save money, where somehow we're?
The cities are, the cities are committing to a fixed amount within a small range to the county to build it. We have a commitment to build a 521 jail, but the cost variations are basically the county's responsibility. So if we save, we do a little bit better. Of course, if it goes over, we're at risk at that end of it. And that was a compromise that was worked out from the cities. They wanted to re, I put an original proposal out for them to contribute a higher dollar amount, and they says, "No, we want to contribute lower." And I says, "Well, do you want, do you want that contribution to be with risk or without risk?" And they basically wanted the fixed amount. We wrote it into the contract that they are paying the fixed amount, and we're the ones that are in control of the cost fluctuations. So the savings will be to the county, although on this big of a project and this complicated of a project it is, is I don't think that there's going to be substantial variables. I mean, if people are thinking that we're, we're talking 10, $15 million, it's not going to be there. We're talking, you know, 2% to 3% that we may be able to achieve through the construction bid process.
Okay, well, I don't have a problem if we postpone just for the two weeks. I have no problem with that, because I wouldn't mind if somebody does have a magic bullet out there. I'd still like to hear what it is, so I'm okay with postponing it for two weeks, but I don't want to postpone it longer than that.
Councilmember Sidoo?
One little thing is that in number 11, at the last line, it reads, "Establishment of a Criminal Justice Diversion Task Force," and we have already renamed it as Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force, so it's kind of conflicting headings. It's, does not to be construed as a different committee or task force to be formed. I think they need to be matched. So, the other part is, is question for Executive is, is DLR the chosen builder, or is it DLR is just going to do the design, and it's going to get, it's up to the county who actually builds it?
We're proceeding under the direction of going out for bid to it. So DLR is the architect, project manager. We would put the design specifications, spec books together, have pre-construction meetings with contractors that were pre-validated to be able to be bonded for that type of a project, and then go out to bid for it, and then we would go with the low bidder to be able to select.
One more follow-up is, is county going to get their own project manager for this particular project because it's a very, very large project, $100 million, rather than putting on for the existing staff to manage it on the side?
Absolutely, and we have money in the projected construction costs for that. I think it's $250,000 or $300,000, and we would be getting a owner's rep, owner's representation contract, that we would have our own reps on the job, paying attention to what was happening, to make sure that the project is done to our satisfaction, so that they would recommend it to us.
My point is that you don't want DLR to be the project manager, even they are the engineers and architects, so it becomes kind of.
In Linden, it's a lot smaller project built in the city hall. We did that, on that project. WTA, when we built the maintenance and operation buildings out in Iron Gate, we hired owner's reps, and I wouldn't do a project of this size without, without that.
Okay, one more little thing, sorry, just one. Can it be up to 521 beds, or, like, we have fixed a number, like, this is a number, you know, 470 could be good, 570 could be as well as a good number. Can it be that up to 521 beds? Because right now, it's kind of fixed, like, as you say, we are 60% design, and we do that, we do value engineering, and ideas come up, it kind of puts us in a bind, that's the number. Is it possible?
The cities, particularly Ferndale at this particular time, are saying, "We're going to be involved in the agreement," but the county, county needs to build a 521-bed jail because the agreement is designed so that Watkin County has first priority for the facility for its felon population. And then after that, we're all doing a shared agreement. agreement as it relates to our legally responsible misdemeanors. So if we build, if we build a jail that's four hundred beds, the city of Ferndale is saying, hey, I don't want to give you a quarter million dollars a year, because I'm not guaranteed bed space at that particular time. So that's why the cities are saying, we want a jail that's big enough that's going to give us jail space for the dollars that we're providing. So, we're at this particular time, this agreement is for a five hundred and twenty-one bed jail. Now, if the county wants to change that, then I'll need to go back to all of the cities and say, hey, the county, you know, if you guys say, well, hey, we only want to build a four hundred bed jail, I can pretty much guarantee that the cities are gonna say, well, we're not going to give you the financial contribution, because there's no guarantee that there's going to be enough bed space for us, so-
Yeah, I'm not really questioning five hundred and twenty-one number, you know, what I'm saying is, that we are only sixty percent complete, and, and there are a lot of moving parts and a lot of uncertainties, but only one number is fixed, is five hundred and twenty-one, but other things are not fixed. That's the question I'm saying, is, is there any flexibility?
There's, the, the two-cell block design that we have, and sheriff can get more involved in terms of the operational end of it, gives us the ability to divide our prison population up into twelve segmented groups, male, female, sex offenders, non-special needs, so on and so forth. So the two housing pods, I, I believe are going to remain at that five hundred and twenty-one bed, um, size. Where we're going to be able to create the flux, uh, and the changes, is, you know, we need to reevaluate the kitchen size, the intake size, the medical facility is part of the five hundred and twenty-one beds, that seventeen beds will remain, um, storage space and so on and so forth, and then the products that we put in it. That's how we're going to be able to change the dollars, uh, associated with it. But the, but the housing units at five twenty-one, and all of the major components are there, but we need to take a, a look at this design that we have, not change it substantially, but just make sure that we value engineer it. Now, just part of the questions that you made, the, had this morning is, is, I intend to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, Mr. Sedu's covered most of my questions, but I just, again, for the benefit of the audience, I just want to clarify, we, we, we do have a contractual commitment, if we go through with this, for five hundred and twenty-one bed facility, but if there is an opportunity to reduce the cost per bed through intelligent design or other options, we still have that option available to us up until we release the contracts to the actual, uh, construction companies.
Correct.
Yep.
This is sort of my suspicious nature, I'm nervi, just because, you actually made me think of it, um, if DLR does the architectural, I'm nervous that they could try to make it be, make it look like something that they could give us the lowest bid on. What, are we gonna be able to protect ourselves from something like that with our own, having our own oversight special person? Okay, I've seen it happen before, where somebody does a bid on the architect, and then they design it so that they can come in with the lowest bid on, it's, it's a design, that they'll talk us into the design work that makes it easier for them to come in on the lowest bid to do the, to do the construction. I'm actually not comfortable having the same company do both.
Well, DLR is not going to do the construction, they're the, they're the architect for the project, and then we're, then we're going out to bid, and the contractor will be selected, and they'll bid on the plans that are designed and submitted for bid. So we'll have a contractor, we'll have an architect, and we'll have us, and we'll have our owner's rep on there, and we'll have the three legs of the stool out on the, out on the construction site to make sure that the county's interests are, um, are taken care of.
But it could still end up being DLR that does both?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, DLR will not do the construction.
Okay.
Mr. Mann?
Mr. Executive, uh, did I hear you say that Ferndale's contribution to the sales tax is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Uh, that was a number I pulled, I, I pulled it out as a, just a number out of the head, that we can, we can come up with that here in a minute, if you want.
'Cause I, it's funny, I've been sitting here trying to calculate that myself. When, when it's put out, when you mentioned, oh, well, Ferndale won't sign it if it's, if it's not five hundred and twenty-one beds, I'm trying to figure out, like, how much do we really rely on their financial contribution at this point to cover the bond?
I, I was off, it's two hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars, that was fourteen thousand off.
Okay, so two hundred and sixty-four thousand out of a seven million dollar, uh, payment?
Uh, about a six point six million dollar payment.
So, I'll just be blunt, I mean, do we really care? I mean, two hundred and sixty-four thousand is not, is, is not going to change our design one way or the other. So if we've got six, seven million dollar bond payments, and we're worth about two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, I think it's much more important, we get the design right and the size right, and not let, uh, one of the smaller contributors to the project dictate how big it's gonna be.
Well, it's, uh, they're contributing to about three point eight five four million of the capital costs, and, you know, equal to that for the, relatively equal to that for the city of Linden. Um, Bellingham is contributing, you know, about one point two five million dollars a year, which is contributing about twenty million dollars worth of capital costs. So, I mean, you know, four million here, four million there, like, what do they say in Congress?
Starts to add up.
A billion here, a billion there, and all of a sudden, it adds up to real money. Uh, for the county, um, it's still, I, I think that it's still important, you know, one of the premises of this whole thing is, is that we've been working, I've been working to try to make this a facility that will both work for the cities and for the counties, so that we're in this together, and that we're providing the traditional jail services that we have done, and, um, I think everybody's contribution is important, including Sumasses and Eversons and Nuxack, they're all, uh, in, in, in their own way, they're all contributing an equal, uh, amount to their size and to their, to their revenue into the project, so-
And I'm not, I, I don't want to diminish your substantial and, and, uh, uh, much appreciated efforts at gathering countywide and, and all the city's support, but, I also don't want to lose sight of the fact that, you know, essentially, Bellingham and Wachem County are gonna be paying for this, and, I'm not gonna, I, I'm, I'm not going to let, um, you know, the inconvenience of going back to Ferndale or Sumass or Everson, or the, the relatively, and I mean that literally, the relatively minor contribution financially that they're making drive the design. I think if, if we wanna, uh, adjust the size of the jail, that's our prerogative. I mean, you came to us last, but, um, I, I just think we need to be making the decisions.
Mr. Sedu.
Bellingham, uh, proposes something different. We have to go back to the smaller cities anyways, because any one of these, and one left is either county council or Bellingham City Council is. If Bellingham City Council does, we have to renegotiate anyways, right? But I, I don't want to see that this is a big factor, because other cities have signed on, so we are stuck with that. All I'm trying to, to hear from, uh, Councilman Cannon, Mann, is, is that, yes, it's a great consideration, but we should not hold ourselves that if there's a small change, which is acceptable, and brings a big compromise, then we should be able to do that, not just because other cities have signed on it.
News Brenner?
Um, we have somebody here from the Ferndale City Council who said the number was wrong, so, I would sure like to hear-
Yeah, we just got a request from a member of the Ferndale City Council to address the council. What is it?
About the number?
Do people want to open that back up and hear from the member of the Ferndale City Council?
I would sure like to know about the number, just about the number.
We have a motion to hold for two weeks. Does the council want to hear from the Ferndale City Councilmember? Any desire for that? Okay, we've got two weeks, they can get it through. So, if the motion to hold it for two weeks, then we can ask that question again.
I'll talk to you afterwards.
Somebody else had a hand up, who? Mr. Brown?
So if we hold this for two weeks, I'm not, I'm not sure what we're achieving, given that we've still got to get the city of Bellingham's sign off, and they've indicated they won't sign off until we've signed off, so-
Well, now they've said they're not gonna sign off.
Okay, but, if, if we, if we say yes to this, they've still gotta vote, they've still gotta, if we say yes to this, they still either have to say yes or come back to us with an alternative for us to vote on. Right, so, given the timeframe, well, and I personally think we're skipping one step by saying yes tonight, and saying to the city of Bellingham, okay, we've signed on to this, either sign on to us or tell it, sign on to it or tell us what you don't like, and give us an alternative proposal that we can consider at the next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank, uh, Councilmember Brown for, for bringing that, that matter up, because, and I was gonna ask the, the administration about your talks with the city of Bellingham. I've heard nothing, I mean, the only thing I know is what I read in the newspaper. Uh, so, and, and I don't mean that in a disparaging way, I just, that's just the way it's been. And, it would seem to me, because we are in this tight time crunch, um, I think it would probably be prudent for us to move on this, and then, in order to get a, you know, a position, a, a formal position from the city of Bellingham, uh, we, you know, if we wait two more weeks, and then, uh, you know, throw it over across the street, it, we're just running, you know, we're just gonna increase the chances of us not making whatever deadlines we need to make. So, I, I think just to, to keep this process moving, and, and I'm certainly open to more discussion, but, I was gonna support the motion to, uh, you know, to, to hold off on this for two weeks, but, after further thought, I think that we, we need to adopt this, and then get a formal position from the city of Bellingham, so that we can act accordingly.
Mr. Sedu?
Uh, I heard before, I don't know exactly who said that, that, oh, it was Barry, I believe, that we can have a joint council meeting. I think that's a good, good proposal, I, I kinda like that, because, let it be, and, you know, and the public input, as well as both the councils, get it done with, whichever way you want to do that. So I, I, I like that idea too, sir.
Mr. Buchanan?
I think that's the only way that we're gonna be able to have that conversation, we have to have that conversation consecutively with them and the council. And instead, I agree, the start back and forth isn't working, and that's why I suggested that we all get in the same room, have a public hearing, have a work session, and have both councils consider at the same time.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, just for clarity, we're, we're currently talking about the first resolution approving the jail facility, which is the first of the two resolutions. Mr. Executive, do you see a problem if we were to vote on approving this one tonight, and wait until the city of Bellingham's responded before we vote on the second one?
No, I think that the most important one, um, is the jail facility use agreement, and if the city of Bellingham then approves that next week, uh, we'll know that they're in favor of it. Um, you know, I've heard, I've heard conflicting reports, uh, Mr. Buchanan, um, doesn't think that it's going to pass. I heard about three weeks ago that it may pass. Uh, but really what it boils down to is, is that in, I think of April fourth or fifth, um, I presented all of the legislative bodies in Wachem County with this jail facility use agreement, and asked for them to look at it, look at the merits of the, the proposal based on their jurisdiction, and to be able to say, say yes or no to it. I encourage the yes vote, of course, but if they were gonna say no, is, is to be able to say no in a timely manner, because I did ask for them to re, get back to us by, and I asked you also, to get back to us by the end of April with a decision, so that we would have the ability to be able to modify and craft a compromise agreement, if, if that was possible, because, working with eight different legislative bodies, it's very tough to get everybody in the same room and make it happen. So that's what I put forward. I would really encourage Wachem County Council to, to take the lead role, and look at this in terms of whether or not you feel it's in the best interest of Wachem County to move this forward to the voters, and, and I, I really would ask that you take a vote on it tonight, and then allow the city of Bellingham to look at it the same way that the rest of the jurisdictions have been, is look at it in light of the city of Bellingham, of whether or not they would like to be part of it under this arrangement, and if they aren't, I have specifically asked for them to articulate what they would need to have changed to be able to make it work, and to come back at that particular time, engage you and the rest of the cities to see whether or not that's going to be possible. I don't, you know, I, the, the, the challenge that I have with waiting two weeks is, is it even possible to get a meeting posted and get enough people together in the next two weeks to, to be productive in making that happen? Because it seems to me, if you go two weeks, we're probably talking four to five weeks before the whole thing unwinds, and I, um, I, I would just, again, I think Councilmember Brown said it best is, is that, you know, somebody needs to take the lead in terms of, uh, making a decision, and I would ask you guys to do that tonight, and then allow the city of Bellingham to react to that.
All right, there's a whole bunch of people want to speak, but I've got the microphone. And I'd like to just delve into Mr. Buchanan's motion a little bit, 'cause I'm trying to make sure I understand the motion. The motion was to hold it for two weeks, and I thought it was to allow this community coalition that's coming together to come back and give us their proposal. So I'd like to, to delve into that a little bit. Can you tell me, who are these community groups that have been meeting? I haven't heard anything about it.
The, the coalition has, has just recently formed, so they haven't had the chance to formally, uh, cement their, their basics, like their executive directors, their positions, so, they didn't really want to be named, but they are very, very credible, uh, organizations throughout our county, so, that should be forthcoming soon, I'm sure, that we'll be able to know that.
Okay, and the, the second one, and I just want to agree with Mr. Buchanan, I have talked with a lot of the city council members, and my guess is, right now, that that's, it's not passing over there. Um, although their issues are very different than any of the issues I've heard talked about tonight, their issue is, they want paid for one tenth of one percent sales tax and the rest, property tax. And, that's what I heard, that if they reject it, they'll be asking for, so, it's a very different thing. They also said that they don't want to vote on it until we vote on it, so, in the sketch twenty-two. Um, I think it was Mr. Mann first.
Just to touch on a few things, I don't believe this current agreement is in the best interest of Wachem County, and if it is, put to a vote tonight, I will support it. Um, it came to us in April, that's two months, we, we on the council don't have the benefit of a million dollar consultant contracts and staff to, to research everything and come up with, uh, credible alternatives on the fly. And when we're, we're talking about the biggest public works project in the history of Wachem County, there's no reason to rush into it. We're talking about a hundred and twenty million dollar construction project and a billion dollars in obligations over thirty years. This idea that we should just rush into it and just, just vote on it already, because you've been talking about it for too long, I agree, I'm frustrated talking about it, but I want to get it right. And, I won't vote for it as it is right now, I, I'm quite confident the city of Bellingham will not vote for it as it's currently constructed, so, I know we should wait two weeks, hear from some experts, some more experts on the subject, and, and get something that will pass. I think, Mr. Buchanan said it earlier, the goal is to get something that will pass the voters, not just pass the city of Bellingham or Wachem County, it's gotta get past the voters too. And, even if you squeak through the county tonight, I don't see it getting through Bellingham's council, and I don't see it getting through the population, so, let's get it right, let's collaborate on this thing, if we get everyone on board, so we can have seven O recommendations from the city council and the county council, and then, you dramatically increase your chances of getting it through.
Mr. Brenner?
Thank you. Well, I, I want to move this thing forward, because, we need to, if we're gonna work a collaborative way with Bellingham, we need to keep the process going. And it's my understanding, and it's been this way for quite some time, city of Bellingham has expressed its- Bellingham has expressed its desire, in fact, they've, they've expressed their position that they're not going to deal with the issue until we approve the interlocal agreement. So, we need to, we need to, you know, put the ball in play in order for us to work with the city of Bellingham in a collaborative way. I am all in favor of, of having a, a joint meeting for the city of Bellingham. But I, by, by moving this forward doesn't preclude that, it actually encourages it. But I really think that the city of Bellingham is not going to take, I mean, their, their position is, we're not going to take this issue up until the Belling, the Waukun County council moves it forward, because what's the point in us even taking a position on it unless, unless the city, the county is going to, to move forward on it? If we're not going to move forward on it, there's no need for them to take a position on it. So, I think we need to, we can do both. I think actually doing both, passing this tonight, and sending it over to the city of Bellingham, and getting their, their position on it, is consistent with working with the city of Bellingham, in the event that they're, they're, they have some problems with the, the current interlocal agreement.
Mr. Brown.
So, I, I'm supportive of, of passing this resolution tonight, going to the city of Bellingham and immediately saying, "Let's sit down and, and talk through the issues," because we, we, we're not even aware what their schedule is. We, we don't know what the availability of the other council members is outside of the normal schedule. But I would take to the, go into the room saying, "Look, we've already signed off on this. Please sign on, off on this, or tell us what the issues are, and then we'll come back and we'll work together in that session, and then come back and vote on it if we've got something that's worth, that we can live with." That still leaves the final resolution, which is to put this on the ballot, unvoted on, so the council still maintains control as to whether this goes to the, to the voters. And I think we've, you know, that would be my preference as a way of handling this.
Mr. Brenner.
I, I agree. I feel like they've made it very clear in the past, they're not going to vote on anything until we vote on something. I mean, it was a line in the sand, I remember it. So, I'm totally supportive of getting together, having a hearing with them, doing whatever they want, but, you know, for, for everybody to be just going, "No, you first, no, you first, no, you first," that's not going to get us anywhere. So, I, I agree that this allows it to, to come, for them to come back with a counter proposal, it allows the time for the people who spoke tonight about other ideas to put those out, too. I think it's a great way to get this moving.
This is on their agenda next Monday?
Oh, it is.
Mr. Buchanan.
Call the question.
What was the, oh, to table?
Question is to hold, the, the motion in front of us is to hold it for two weeks. All right. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor of holding for two weeks, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no.
No.
Think that failed four to three with council members, Sedu, Mann, and Buchanan in favor. So, now we have the whole resolution in front of us, which I think you moved, but I'm not sure we ever got a second.
He seconded.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Cremmon did second.
That I remembered.
Well, actually, that was the one.
All right. Any other discussion on the whole resolution? I'll just say that I am with Mr. Brown on this one. I have no intention of voting for the next resolution. I think we need to send this to the city of Bellingham, find out what their intentions are. This will also give the community groups a chance to come back and talk to us in two weeks before we pass, to put it on the ballot. And if they convince us, we can undo the resolution that we may be about to pass. Mr. Mann.
So, what, what is the logic between passing this one and not the next one? And I'm not being facetious, I don't, I don't understand.
I, I think the logic is, we, we've passed the interlocal, which is what the city of Bellingham wanted to know what we were going to do with the interlocal before they voted on it. So, we're going to, we potentially could pass it this evening, send it to them, and then we'll hear from, on Monday, they will take it up and decide whether they're going to pass it, or whether they're going to give us an alternative proposal. Any other discussion?
Well, when...
Somebody sent to me an important message here telling me what I just did wrong, so...
Uh-oh.
Please clarify who moved and seconded the motion. Ms. Brenner moved the motion, and Mr. Cremmon seconded.
I think, that was my question.
Okay, so, so, so this motion is to approve the resolution, the interlocal, and attachment A, the joint facility user agreement. And, and if you vote for this, then you're basically saying, you know, you're on board with the jail as currently proposed and designed and going forward. That, this is as close as you can get to a public vote on that issue?
Yep.
I don't know. For me...
Ms. Brenner.
For me, it's saying, unless you can do something better, I really think we can move ahead on the jail.
Mr. Brown.
I see this as a vote saying that we are agreeing to build a 521-bed facility out in La Bounty, and we believe the cost will, their share of the, their share of the total cost, or the total project cost will not exceed ninety-seven million dollars. That's what I believe we're agreeing to. Now, they may come back and say, "We, we don't like that," and then they'll tell us what they don't like.
Yep.
And then we finally decide whether we, we, we like what their alternative is, or whatever, and then we decide on whether we put that, the next item onto the ballot, and then the voters decide whether they like it.
Mr. Buchanan.
I guess, could you explain again, the, Councilmember Weimer, how, if, if we approve this, and then the city of Bellingham takes it up, and they want to do a compromise, how do we incorporate that then into this interlocal?
Well, as the executive explained, it takes...
Do we vote to amend the resolution, or...
Well, I think as the executive explained, it takes all the cities to approve this interlocal. So, if Bellingham doesn't approve the interlocal, this resolution's dead anyway. It'd have, we'd have to come back with a new interlocal. Is that correct?
Yes.
Agreed to by all cities, not just Bellingham and Waukun County.
You have to go back out there, but you can't...
So, if they change one word in it, the whole thing gets reopened.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, speaking of that, Ben, I think Councilmember Mann had one little teensy-weensy amendment he wanted to propose anyway. Why don't you do it now?
Um, no, thanks. It's a different, it's on the other resolution.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. All right. So, we have a motion to approve this resolution in front of us. Any other discussion? I, I guess I will just add, because I think people were saying, "What does it mean to vote for this?" I think it means it's something a little different for probably a number of us. I'm voting for it to send it to the city of Bellingham to find out where they're at. I'm also voting for it because I want to hear from this community group that showed up at the last minute, to hear if they have any good ideas. It's a resolution. We can change it in two weeks if we don't like it. If the committee, if the community convinces us, we really can get by with a seventy-five million dollar jail. Mr. Brown.
And you've kept it, captured my thoughts exactly.
Yeah.
Mr. Brown.
And, and also, the other thing that, that Councilmember Brown didn't, in his explanation of what we're actually doing tonight, we're, we're also ratifying a funding formula, and, which apparently has some opposition across the street. So, it, it, this just keeps it alive. Unless we pass the final, the final of the three measures tonight, we're not, we're not saying that we approve the final product, because we're not going to throw it, we're not going to provide an opportunity for the voters to, to make a decision on this. And until we do that, we're not, we're not committing ourselves to anything, really. We're not, the only thing we're committing ourselves to is that we want to continue this process.
Any other discussion?
I, I won't count my soapbox again. I, I'm not going to vote for it. I don't want to send the message to the city of Bellingham that I like the plan. So, I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. We have the rope resolution in front of us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, that passes six to one with Councilmember Mann opposed. Now, we have the next resolution, a resolution providing for submission to the qualified voters of the county, a proposition authorizing the local sales and use tax of two-tenths of one percent for the purpose of providing funds for costs associated with financing, designing, acquiring, constructing, equipping, operating, maintaining, remodeling, repairing, re-equipping, and improvements of jail facilities and other public safety purposes. What's the wishes of the council? Buchanan.
I would move to delay until we get through number 11, with the, with the city of Bellingham, and, and what, what their, any counter proposals would be what the coalition might be able to offer, and they've been discussed by several people, that it would be wise to hold.
Okay. So, hold this until the city of Bellingham votes on the interlocal, and for two weeks till, or at least two weeks till we hear from the community groups?
Yeah.
Is there a second to that?
Oh, point of procedure, Mr. Chair. Madam Clerk, do we have to give you a date certain, or is it an event certain?
Yes, please.
A date certain.
Okay. Do you say two weeks? You can always extend.
No, you said two weeks or something else.
There was, it wasn't a date certain. It was a date certain for part of it, but not for all.
Right.
So, hold for two weeks? Yeah, let's hold, let's start there. Okay. So, the motion is to hold this resolution for two weeks. Any other discussion?
I, I have a question.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. If we want to, and this would go to the executives' team as well, page 340 of our pack, it has the language for the ballot proposition generally. Are we allowed to change that language, or is that pulled directly from an RCW? Because I'm asking, well, number one, there's a typo in the word proposition, is it spelled right? But the first sentence includes the Waukun County Council and kind of makes it sound like we're, our stamp of approval is on, on this.
That we proposed it.
Is that a requirement that that's in there, that you cite the resolution of the county council? Or could you just start with the first sentence being, "This ballot proposition would authorize," etc.?
Yes. That's what you can do.
Excuse me, Mr. Mann, are you talking page 339 or 340?
340.
Okay. Uh, I don't believe that the Waukun County Council is, obviously you passed the resolution, but I would have to check with our deputy prosecuting attorney prior to two weeks. But, so it does say, it gives us the ability to change it. It says that we would ensure the proposition is substantially the following form, so we'd be able to change it. I'll check into that, and if we can strike it, I wouldn't mind making the, the resolution a bit smaller also, or be asked.
And can we do that as a same, same day thing, or is it like a land use thing where we have to go back and reintroduce it?
This, this is, this is a resolution authorizing the ballot measure, it's not an ordinance.
So, I can wait until...
It can be done the night of, if that's what we would choose to do.
So, just so you know, I will be making that, that suggestion.
And I'll check into it prior to then.
I appreciate it.
And if anybody does have any other comments on the resolution authorizing for submission to the voters of Waukun County, send, send us an email. I haven't heard from any of you with any substantive changes that you may or may not want to make on that document, so please look at it in the next couple of days, read it over and get it to us, and we'll run it through the attorney and through our bond consultant to make sure that it meets, meets the needs of the county as we move forward.
Okay. All right. So, the motion in front of us is to hold this resolution for two weeks. Any other discussion?
I'll second.
Mr. Cremmon has seconded the motion? Mr. Cremmon.
And I want to explain why. If we're sincere, I, I'm being very pragmatic about this. If you're really sincere about working cooperatively and collaboratively with the city of Bellingham, for us to, to, to pass this resolution would seem like we're jamming the city of Bellingham. If our intent in moving this forward to the city of Bellingham is to, you know, put the, put the ball in play and wait for, you know, the city of Bellingham to work with us to, to move this thing ultimately to the voters, in whatever form it, it finally winds up, I think, I think it would be, I just think it's good, good form and, and prudent for us to, to, to hold this for now, and, and, and demonstrate that, that we are sincere in working with the city of Bellingham to, to resolve any differences there might be.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. We have the resolution in front of us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can you clarify that? That was...
To hold.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the resolution is to hold it for two weeks. All those in favor, was aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If you, you, I'd ask that you would work with the Bellingham City Council, council to council, on this discussion that you may want to have with them, and I'll leave that to you to facilitate. Would that be all right?
I didn't know we made a decision to have a meeting.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of hearing that that might be part of what you would like to do, so... We have to wait for, we have to wait for... You're right. Thank you.
Maybe they'll just say yes.
Yeah, thank you, Executive Lous. I think that's an important part of this discussion. I did talk to the city council president this morning, and he is interested in that, and I've talked to a couple other city council members that are, that are interested in this. So, I would like to move that we start that process, to try to set that up as fast as possible, to have a joint meeting.
Yep.
All right. So, the motion to hold a joint meeting was a second for the city of Bellingham, and a second for Mr. Mann? Any discussion on that? I guess my question is, I doubt that's going to happen before Monday, so I guess they will vote on the interlocal on Monday or not? Okay. We still have a lot to talk about. All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Cremmon.
Well, I, again, I want to be pragmatic about this. I think it would, I think it's only the right thing to do is to wait for an official position or response from the city of Bellingham. We, we can express a desire to work with the city of Bellingham, and if they so, if they, I mean, I don't want to just presume that they're going to turn it down, that they're, they're, I mean, every other city has, has approved this. And so, I, I mean, I just think that it's the proper thing to do is to wait for, and we're just talking about Monday here. I mean, we can, we can, we can state, I think we can take a position that in the event that the city of Bellingham does not ratify or approve this, then enter into discussions with the city of Bellingham to resolve whatever differences there might be. But we don't know for sure if there are going to be any differences, you know, I, I think we just, let's, let's do this, you know, let's, let's not presume anything.
Mr. Buchanan.
I would agree with you, Councilmember Cremmon. However, I think that we do need to start the dialogue, because it's a hard thing to set up. And Monday may not seem very far away, but in terms of trying to set schedules for this kind of thing, it's, it's essential that we start working as soon as we can. So, I think the, in the event, I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
As far as actually putting it together. But I would like to start that conversation, so we don't just hit them flat-footed on Tuesday morning.
Well, and, and I appreciate your, your willingness to accept that as a friendly amendment, but, and so, yes, so I appreciate that, and I think that that's the course that we should take.
All right.
Well, what, what's the whole thing now?
Yeah, that's what I was just about to ask. So, I believe the motion is to, in the event, in the event that the Bellingham City Council turns down the interlocal on Monday, we're going to, we're going to send a message to them, we want to start, we want to meet as soon as possible.
I'd like to maybe modify that just a little bit. It's more semantics, but I think it, that the, the motion should be, I wish, we weren't doing this on the fly, but that, that, that we should, we should initiate a, in the event, actually, it's all semantics, but I, I do think that we should, I think it's best if we started off with that we should... with, that we should initiate a process, or we should initiate an effort to set up a meeting with the city of Bellingham to discuss in the event that, that they don't, in the event that the city of Bellingham does not approve the interlocal.
May I make a amendment to that, if I may? We, we offer to meet with them should they desire, for whatever reason. Just leave it.
Yeah, sure.
That's good.
No.
I won't accept that. So, when I have a late walk, maybe.
No, I'm talking about on this specific issue. If they want to meet on this issue, we are available to meet with them on this issue.
But I would also like to be the best of any way.
Mr. Chair?
That's what I'm saying.
It's not their desire, it also should be our desire.
Okay, but they were expressing...
Why doesn't somebody try, why doesn't somebody try to write down the motion? Because I don't know what it is at this point.
Mr. Sedu?
I was going to say that why don't we word it as pending the decision by city council in their next meeting on this resolution, whatever the name and number is, that county council should initiate some, initiate efforts to have a joint meeting. That, that way, you know, we're giving them leeway to make their decision, but it starts us that we start a discussion on the joint meeting at the same time in parallel. We're not stopping them whatever decision they take, but we should start talking about because scheduling is a real issue and they know our desire also that, okay, whatever your decision is, we still want to talk to you.
Right, no matter what.
Mr. Cremmon?
No, I was just trying to ascertain what council member Buchanan just said. You said, you said something in response to council member Sedu's...
I think I just agreed, but...
Oh, okay.
I think he was agreeing that time is off the crunch, that we should start some kind of discussion.
So, can we say...
So, can someone restate the motion?
Well, pending the...
I'll do it. I'll do it.
Well, the maker of the motion probably would be a better one to restate the motion.
Well, I think reaching out to them early is important, so I like the way that Councilman Cremmon wove that in. I think we didn't quite, didn't quite complete the thought, but I think it was the right track and that was that we would like to initiate a conference, a joint meeting with the Bellingham City Council. Gosh, now I can't remember how you said.
Once they've made their decision.
Oh, yeah, because you put the, in the event in the middle of the sentence rather than at the beginning.
Whatever. I don't think it's really...
I would just like to say, I would like to initiate a conversation with the Bellingham City Council, a joint meeting, and leave it at that.
All right.
It's not, it's not in the event that they turn this down.
No.
Yeah, exactly.
It's only a conversation, so...
Simple is good. Okay, so that's the motion in front of us. Your second still stands?
Heck, yeah.
Okay. I'm going to vote against the motion and I'll just tell you why. They've made it pretty clear to me in my discussions that they wanted sales tax and property tax mixed. I think that's a pretty clear message. If they vote this down, I think that's something that the mayor and the executive are better off trying to figure out how that might work and bringing us a proposal versus 14 of us getting in a room and trying to figure that out. So, I think if they turn it down, they've asked the executive and they've told me that they'll have a clear way to come back at us and I think that's an administrative thing between the mayor and the executive at that point and not for the councils to get in a big room and try to have a circus. Mr. Brown?
This is a question for the executive and it's probably a little bit tough, but does the city of Bellingham have the opportunity to do their funding portion of the jail through a property tax within the Bellingham city limits?
Yes, they could. Let's, but let's say if we went for a two tenths of a percent, then the two tenths goes out and if they wanted to put their property tax on and it failed, that's the challenge that we've had with going, you have to have, you have to have double affirmative to make it happen. And, you know, if Bellingham went out and we approved the sales tax and they didn't want to use the sales tax to pay for it, but their property tax went down at that particular time, they, we need to have them obligate about one and a quarter million dollars a year to us to provide about 100 jail beds for them. So, you know, it, it ends up being that if we're going to do that, we'd probably be, you know, hindsight might have been better to go out and say, hey, if you want to join the party on this, is that, you know, vote onto this sales tax deal. But it makes it extremely, it makes it extremely complicated going to the property tax end of it and that's what, you know, ultimately if Bellingham says no to this and they want to go out to, the only way they'll do it is with a property tax and a sales tax combination, you guys are going to have to say, do you want to do that or not? I don't believe it's feasible on a countywide basis to go out for that, go out for a dual ask to be able to make it happen. Property tax would work, but all it gives us is the capital money because that's all property tax can be used to and the financial modeling that we've put together is, is that we need to have some sales tax revenue for the increased costs of operation to be able to make this community countywide jail run. So, it's just an extremely complicated deal. The reason that it's at the two tenths is, you know, I conferred with the other elected officials in Wachem County and with, with, you know, six of the seven mayors. Actually, Mayor Kelly was in the room and we decided that, that the sales tax was the best way to do it, but it does present challenges for the city of Bellingham. They want to go out for property tax, use one tenth of a percent sales tax because they want to reserve the, the other one tenth of a percent for yet undefined law enforcement programs that they would like to ask the voters to prove. That's, that's where we're at and that's, you know, that's, that's really drilling down to where the challenge is and that wasn't something that I felt that was able and the rest of the mayors weren't able to grasp is going out with that dual, that dual ask.
But do they have the option to sign on to the sales tax now? Do we have the option to have them sign on to the sales tax now and give them an ability to replace the sales tax, recover the sales tax capacity by replacing it with their own property tax initiative?
If they were able to convince the voters of Bellingham to do a levy lid, I'd have to check in that. I think it's legal that they go for a levy lid lift on their property tax. They could do that, but is it likely? I don't know. That's really questions they'd have to answer.
But from our perspective, there's nothing preventing us agreeing to allow them to change their funding source and recover their sales tax capacity.
You know, all, the two tenths of a percent, they're going to get their legally allocated 40% is going to be distributed from the Department of Revenue into their bank account. The jail facility use agreement says of that revenue or basically says, the city of Bellingham is going to pay us 1.25 million dollars a year for the capital costs of the jail plus that. Where that 1.2 million dollars come from is really immaterial. They can backfill it, supplant it, do whatever they want to do or whatever they need to do to be able to make that happen. Our need is, is the commitment of the 1.25 million dollars to be able to make the bond payment. Now, the bonding company is requiring that the paper trail goes from Department of Revenue to them and to us, but if they come up with additional money somewhere else to be able to backfill that 1.2 million dollars, it's, it doesn't, I don't think that it makes any difference to Wachem County.
So, I'm responding to Councilmember Wymer's point in the sense that if the city of Bellingham wants to do, wants to go to a property tax option, I think that exists for them within their own share of this, as opposed to forcing the entire county to go to property tax funding.
In my understanding is they want the other half to be countywide property tax, not just the city of Bellingham. Will I pay you a pass you? All right, so we have a motion in front of us to move forward, whatever it was, with the meeting with the city of Bellingham City Council. Any other discussion?
Well, wait a minute.
Mr. Brenner?
But I like what you said. I was going to support it, but I like what you said at the end, that we're not the ones that can figure out how to do the divvying of sales and property, so I think that should be the executive and the mayor and their administrations.
Mr. Sedu?
I think talking about having a meeting is a different thing. We don't have to have a meeting, but if we postpone even talking about meeting, then we lose time. I think just what we are passing here is that let's start discussion with them. If there's a need, we can have a joint meeting and set up some time. That's all we are doing.
That is...
And, and we don't have to have a meeting if, if there's no need for it.
Okay.
All right. We have the motion in front of us. Everybody ready? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, so that passes six to one with Wymer opposed. And we are now on to, oh, just one other discussion before we move, two other questions before we move on to this. We kind of postponed the second resolution for two weeks because we wanted to hear from the community groups and we want to do that at our next meeting in the committee or the whole or at the meeting session.
Let's do committee of the whole, yeah.
Committee of the whole, okay. And the second question, which may be for the administration or our legal, someone pointed out, I think it was Mr. Sedu, that in the resolution number 11 we already passed, it references a criminal justice diversion task force and we just passed a resolution calling it something different. Is that going to be a problem?
Was it, and I'll check into it, I'll check into it. It's a resolution we can change and I'm wondering whether the...
The interlocal, I don't know if the interlocal has language in it.
I thought we had consolidated those together. We'll check it out.
Okay. All right, so now we're on to council appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. The first one is a nomination and appointment to fill a vacancy on the Long Island Ferry Advisory Committee. We have five applicants, so I have got a fancy score sheet here. The applicants are Bailey, Blake, Gardner, Ging, Lacefield, and Shaw, six applicants.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of all applicants.
Okay, Mr. Brown has recommended approval of all applicants. Is there a second nomination?
Second.
Is it nomination?
Mr. Cremmon has seconded. All right, I think the easiest way to do this is you get to vote for one and start one in and go down. Ms. Brown?
I would just like to point out, one thing I thought was quite insight, well, enlightening about this is there were more, there was exactly the same number of letters received, at least by me, in support of the, of the total number of candidates as there was between Mr. Sedu and Ms. Kershner when we had the council vacancy. There is a lot of interest and is Nancy Ging and Rhyma Blake in the audience?
Rhyma's here.
Right, well, I just want to compliment both of you. Both have received outstanding public support, so...
Right, so we have the vote in front of us and it's another one where lots of people want to be on the ferry advisory committee and lots of really talented people want to be on the ferry advisory committee. So I do want to call through the names and... All right.
Carl Wymer.
Ging.
Red Brown.
Blake.
Ken Mann.
Bailey.
Sat Paul Sedu.
Ging.
Barbara Brenner.
Blake.
Pete Cremmon.
Blake.
Barry Buchanan.
Ging.
Looks like we have a three, three tie between Blake and Ging. So, we're going to try it again.
Good. Carl Wymer.
We're going to start with Ging.
I can start with somebody else if you'd like.
Ging.
Red Brown.
Ging.
Ken Mann.
Bailey.
Sat Paul Sedu.
No, we're only doing those two. He can't do that.
Sorry, I missed that. You're right. You have to choose between the other two.
I don't want to.
Too bad.
That's my choice.
No, you are elected.
Well, you know, you're going to abstain.
All right, fine, I vote for Ging.
Sat Paul Sedu.
Ging.
Barbara Brenner.
Blake.
Pete Cremmon.
Ging.
Barry Buchanan.
Ging.
So, it looks like Nancy Ging has been appointed on a vote of six to one and, but we thank everybody for applying because like I said, I'd like to appoint the whole bunch of you. All right, on to our next one, a nomination appointment to fill a vacancy on the planning commission District III. We had two applicants, but Michael Bursh has removed his name from consideration, so I believe Kelvin Barton is our only applicant. What's the wishes of the council?
Move approval of Kelvin Barton.
Second.
All right, it's been, nomination has been moved for approval and seconded by Mr. Mann.
Point of order. Sometimes we've made it that the nominating, the nomination has to be made by the same district. I don't know if that's actually a rule or not.
Yes, it is a rule.
It has to be District III or the...
Sorry.
What about the second? Does the second also have to be from the district?
No, no.
Okay.
So I will draw my motion and allow a District III or a at-large. Brown?
I nominate Kelvin Barton.
All right, so there's a nomination for Kelvin Barton. It's been seconded by Mr. Buchanan. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? He passes unanimously. Welcome to the planning commission. We're on to introduction items. We have three introduction items this evening.
Oh, this morning, the natural resources committee voted to keep this in committee.
That's right.
No, item number one.
Okay.
It's gotten the staff...
It's not on my sheet, but I will, oh, but this is for the wildlife committee?
Yeah.
We actually still have three though because we have a new one, item four is added to.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, and there's a substitute version of the fireworks one.
Right, it's in the yellow, yellow substitute version.
Yes.
So...
Can I explain, the substitute version doesn't allow it to take effect for a year, which is state law, so.
All right, so...
Barry was right.
Is there a motion to accept the items for introduction?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, it's moved by Ms. Brenner and seconded by Mr. Brown. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Other committee reports? Anything else from natural resources? Anything from finance?
Nothing.
Public works?
Nope.
Planning?
Couple of things. We had an excellent discussion about the reconvenance lands and got an update on the planning process for what the trail network and the use will be, where there's been a lot of outreach to various user groups and interested parties and they're about a year into the planning, probably another six months to a year before there's something to bring to us, but they're making good progress and it looks like they've had a pretty robust process thus far. Another thing that happened at planning committee today was, an issue was brought up about recreation resource management areas. We've also had letters about these items. These are overlays on some of the maps and the comp plan that have drawn some attention from landowners who are in the areas with these overlays and who don't, don't appreciate it and we decided we'd like to have that as an item for discussion in planning committee, so stay tuned for, for that. And I'm also saying this so that Tyler hears me and knows that that's going to be coming up.
Right. Any other items of business this evening? Seeing none, how about just council member updates? Start at that end.
I don't really have much today. Thank you.
Nothing, sir?
Nothing.
Nothing.
What a nothing here for business.
Nothing goes seven to zero.
Long day.
All right, seeing no other business, we are adjourned.